Alright, I'll call it even to order. First order of business is the pledge of allegiance. Next is approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any additions to the agenda? Otherwise I'll take a motion to approve.
So, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Alright, consent agenda. We have the minutes from the May 16th, 2019 regular city council meeting, as well as the financial reports, city accounts payable from June, the financial statements from May 2019, and the liquor store profit and loss from May 2019. Does anybody have any questions on this? Motion approved. Stay. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Our motion passes. Public comment, this time is reserved for comments from the public on matters not listed on the agenda. Please keep comments to three minutes. Nobody from the public. Departmental reports. Police chief is not here. The report is in the packet. The arrest, I'll let him talk about it the next time. Bugs and hugs went very well. The MS-150 bike ride, they had to change the route, which we'll talk a little bit about later, but sounds like that went off pretty well as well. We do have the two new part-timers that were approved a meeting or two ago. They're getting trained in. Hopefully we'll start covering some shifts here pretty soon. Other than that, I don't have anything else really to report. Public works.
Minister Administrator, or the council, busy month, very, very busy. Summer's obviously going and weather's driven nice and we're moving right along, so. Water department distributed 4.6 million gallons of drinking water in the month of May. Had a lot of training this last month, actually. Scott and myself pulled onto Carlton. Last two weeks ago Wednesday, and I attended hydrant school. For as much as hydrant school sounds boring, there's actually a lot to learn. It's actually pretty neat. Learned a lot of things that I think we're gonna be able to put into our water system. Tried to repair some of the leaking ones, the hard journey ones, hard operating ones, and some of the ones that just are shut off due to being out of service, which isn't very many. I attended a bit more meeting in St. Cloud. As I sit on that board, that was, that was an experience that was... It was a meeting. Everyone knows I hate meetings, so it is what I did. The following week, last week, Scott was in two arbers at a line locating crane, and basically for locating utilities, water sewer, that kind of thing. Scott reported back to me, said that was very helpful training. Learned a lot of things I was able to do. Right now, well number one is out of open for service. It should be back installed next week. We do have a spare in place in well number one as well, so the pump is allocated and worked on. And going from there. Sewer department collected 22 million gallons of wastewater in the month of May. Chemical feed treatment at the wastewater facility is done. That took place last week. We started our June discharge today. Everything is looking good as far as being our limits and going from there. Street department, street sweeping is completed. Some follow-up was done on that on a couple of areas that were missed, and that got looked at. Got the puddle filling done on a monthly basis as always. FEMA storm sewer repairs, you see them all over the town. We're making a mess, but they should be done the end of next week. Build a laptop, a concrete back, and then just continue moving into cemeteries every week, so it's working out really well. It's, it's another added task definitely, but it's really coming around. It looks really good.
Are these, any of these projects that are going now, they're eliminate INI parts?
No, it's all storms.
It's all storms.
Yep, it's all FEMA reimbursement stuff. I wish it did, but it's not, so.
Before I ask a question, there's a, there's a sewer project that we've talked about that we could do that would eliminate quite a bit of INI if we were interested in doing something like that. Do you want to talk a little bit about the hydrant training, about repairing them rather than replacing them?
Yeah, so, there was, there's basically two different stages in IT when repairing. You can either go all brand-new, which costs a lot of money, or there are internal parts of them that are rebuildable. They're only rebuildable down to above the 60s, which pretty much outgives half of our hydrants. But for that part that it does fall apart for, and that it will work, there is, there is some ideas that we, listen, think we learned, there's some ideas we have, and there's a few things we're actually gonna try on a couple hydrants there. More remote areas out in woods, people don't even know they're there. I didn't know they were there until after I actually took over a superintendent, so. So yeah, there's a few things as far as parts. There's some tools we'll have to buy. Nothing crazy, nothing, no huge ticket item. I'm not gonna lie, though, right now with our workbook, there's nothing I want to get into, but you know, this fall, possibly next spring, it'd be something like looking to repair kits or something like 400 bucks a hydrant instead of 10,000 to dig up and replace. So just one or two is a huge savings. And we have, I think, 137 hydrants or something like that, so I mean, two at 800 bucks is better than two at 20 grand, so.
Then do you want to talk about the water break?
So yes, next week there'll be some, we'll be making a mess up there. We have, we have a water service leaking to a house that was not occupied all winter, and we found this in February. And the problem with digging a water break in February in a state highway is that the state has real rules and regulations as far as what they require to have the patch look like when it's done. Laptop plants don't load up until May, so it's very hard to get it checked off. It's very hard to get a patch. It's very hard to get patching material even to set up a cure. For example, the patch that's on the intersection of folds and growth, that was put in by us and that was using our own product, which everyone's been over it. It's rough. It's not what it should be. Nor does a meet mend that spec, and they require us to take that out and then put it in with pot mix, which means there's spec. So that one will be getting replaced. The thing I don't like about opening up a hole in a state highway is once I open it up or we open it up, we own it until it is passed by their inspectors and it's back accepted by them as the state. That's why gravel doesn't work so well, because there's so many cars, there's so much traffic, there's so much weight thrown on that road. We had one patch we took care of for two weeks with gravel, and we were out there, sometimes we were out there twice a day. And yeah, so it's not perfect. But anyway, what I believe we're talking about. There's a service leak between, it's on the city part of the service. And so that is from the main to the curb stop at property nine. We are, Monday I believe we are starting on that. We're actually gonna relocate the service to the north side of the property, which is water main back there in Anheuser, which keeps us more out of the block top and out of the 73 right away. The water main at that address is actually on our side of Mid-Notre-Grave Way, which is 75 feet away, so technically we would open and cut Highway 73 and completely shut traffic down, which no one wants to do, I don't want to do, and I know Tim really doesn't want to do. So we're gonna relocate the service, and then, and part of that is abandoning the old service at Main. So we do have to dig up in the block top. It's a lot smaller scale than crossing the highway and shutting everything down. We've done this before. It's kind of a headache, but we've done it and we'll get through it. But we do get a lot of, a lot of help with traffic control from that. It's really, really helpful, so. Does that answer what, you're good? That's all I got?
Okay, Chief, you wanna dig her up?
Sure. All trades for being lean as they come. Definitely tell it summertime. It's just been an absolute zoo in town. Had a very lengthy investigation. Ended up doing several search warrants and were able to find stolen property that we recovered from four different burglaries in the area. Working with the sheriff's office to get those completed. We did arrest two individuals for possession of stolen property, and also we found a felony amount of controlled substances as well. Bugs and hugs, we did that Saturday, May 25th. Very well attended. I think we did 80 fingerprints of little kids, which that's a feat on itself. Got a lot of positive remarks about the police department. People are just really appreciative of what I'll be doing. It's really nice to hear, so. MS Bike-A-Thon went fine. A lot of traffic, a lot of people, but no incidents. Our two new part-timers are being trained in. Nice thing they're already working police officers, got experience, and the main thing is just learning our computer system, which isn't real user-friendly, and just learning the area, but they're both doing very well, so. That's really what I'll be up. Just very busy with various investigations and just the day-to-day activity. Couple lawns in town that grass is getting quite high. They have been notified. We'll fill it up and resolve it rather quickly, so. The old school and the old Nissan building. Just got off the phone with the old Nissan building. He said we got tonight. I've got to come up with some school stuff.
The school was done that week?
Should've been.
The old school.
Yeah, it wasn't yesterday, I don't think. Yesterday morning.
Yeah, saw somebody out there.
That's big lawn. No, but if people do notice a blight situation, just give us a call to the police department and we'll throw a call.
What about the old Homish house up there next to the school?
Yeah, that's been a problem with every year. I'll send out a letter to them as well.
Okay. And on those burglaries, were those burglaries in the city of Moose Lake?
They were not. Free were in the apartment in Atkinson, it was on the Coney Line Road. But the property was in a garage in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Down to the technology library report. As far as technology goes, we are working on getting the campground set up on our network with a computer and a phone. That's hit a couple delays, but I believe they're going back out there within a week. Next Friday, I think they're going out there to finish setting up, getting the computer and the phone set up. We also looked at putting Wi-Fi in for all of the users of the campground. I think the initial assessment came in at about 10,000 for that. Plus, we would need to put up new poles and trench fiber into the poles. And quite frankly, that got a little expensive in a hurry. My suggestion would be, I still would like to expand the campground into, what is that? That baseball field down there. Move the baseball field to the new school, even though the referendum passed. Or, I'm sorry, even though the referendum failed. I would still like to work on moving that baseball field up there and expanding the campground. And if we did that, we could tie a Wi-Fi project into the same revenue bond for expanding the campground. So I don't know that we're gonna continue looking at that one right now. That's a little expensive. The computers that we were purchasing this year have all been purchased. We'll be doing one more round January 1st of 2020. All of our computers will be on Windows 10, which is required, as Windows 7 will no longer be supported. So that one, well, we are also doing a full kind of assessment and layout of power and lights system, as well as ours. Ours is a little bit easier, but we ran into kind of some issues with maybe not knowing where everything is, what equipment was everywhere. And now with CW, we'll go through a full layout of everyone's system, so that we'll know who's getting billed for what and where everything is, and it'll be a little bit easier. And then finally, I think the public works garage or the pole was struck by lightning, so there's some issues with the SCADA system and SCADA computer, which Phil is our new IT guy. He's getting that resolved. As far as the library goes, we have a couple minutes in the packet from a few meetings, and then there's one item that we'll talk about later. I don't know if you want to talk about any of the programs. Have you talked to the city council at all yet?
Yep.
Okay, why don't we just have her come up and introduce herself then? Shelby is the new library director. Can I ever give a little rundown of who she is?
Hi, I'm Shelby. I'm the new library director. I have been in this position almost four months now, I think. Just since I've been here, I've kind of gotten the lay of the land a little bit. Tried to incorporate some new programs. I started some new social media with the library, trying to get more people in the library and using it. All of our programs so far have gone pretty well. And, yeah, I think, I didn't prep anything, so.
Any hard-hitting questions from the council?
Alright.
Alright. Going on to the next one is the city engineer. At our last meeting, most of the time was spent on the special assessment policy that's in the packet. Kind of went line by line. There's quite a few things that our state statute or our standards and other things that we went line by line, and my recommendations are in the policy itself, which we can talk about later on. Other than that, a lot of what's going on right now is the water model project. Phil and the city engineers are trying to figure out whether or not we need some of the pressure-reducing valves that we have, and whether or not we can pump from the wells to the water tower without the booster station that we have. I don't, we haven't done the booster station yet, as we have a water break, so we kind of want to figure some of that stuff out. But once we have that done, we'll be able to size pumps a little bit better, better, and be able to figure out some of the costs for the two, two pumps as well, so. Once that's done, I think we'll, we'll be able to put together the estimate and move forward a little bit quicker on the new water project. Any questions from the administrator? Chamber of Commerce update?
District Administrator, city council members, thanks for having me. It's been a couple months since I've been here, and I think I'll just bring you up to date from my last visit here. Some of it might be repeat, but we have a lot of change at the chamber here this summer. I hope you all are aware that Dusty is no longer our executive director. He moved on to bigger, better things, and we wish him a lot of luck. And we did go through the hiring process. We hired a gal by the name of Allison Jones. The unfortunate thing is she's not able to start until August. And she is the right person for the job. That's what we wanted. We didn't want the person that could start immediately. We just want the right person. So we're in a little bit of flux this summer. If you call or step into the chamber office, you will likely be greeted by Nikki Goodnature, Kamel Parker, or Cassie Zimmer. And that's, that's our plan throughout the summer, and it's going fairly well to this point. I would ask anybody if there's concerns or questions and you're not able to reach somebody, go ahead and give me a call. But August 20th, I believe, this one Allison will be officially starting. She's pretty dynamic. She's the director of, or one of the directors of Camp Hartland. Looking forward, looking forward to her coming on board with us. We also have a new junior ambassador this year. Her name is Savannah Gans. We're excited to have her come on board, so on Saturdays Savannah will also be there greeting people. She's excited to, to help us out with that position. Moving on, we are coming into our extraordinarily busy time of the year, so we have a lot of activities coming up. Fourth of July is in full swing. We will have a flyer being distributed shortly. We've started taking parade entries. We suspect it will be a very good, very good parade again this year. Two things I want to highlight about the Fourth of July. We have two businesses in town that are celebrating 100 years of being in business. We have First National Bank at Moose Lake and the Lake Theater, so the chamber is hoping to highlight them a little bit. The theater has offered, they'll be doing a pre-movie during the Fourth of July this year. Sometime in the afternoon, we're thinking one or two o'clock, we're not sure. So if you're able to, come and see ET. So on the big screen, not a DVD, it's the actual movie. And I've kind of decided for myself, so. Egghead Days is coming up, July 13th and 14th. Planning for that is going extraordinarily well. As usual, we've got a fantastic committee that runs that. July 13th and 14th down at the Riverside Arena. That's, last year was our first year having that at the Riverside Arena. There's a few things we believe we have worked out, but we hope that it will go pretty smooth. We're gonna follow that up, July 20th with the triathlon. Again, a few minor changes that happen year to year, but that event continues to grow. It's actually a pretty significant event for the area, brings a lot of people into town, a lot of revenue to the businesses, so. And we'll round out the summer really with our golf event on August 2nd. So we are extraordinarily busy. The only thing that I ask is a little leniency this summer because of our change of executive director. Any questions?
Another question. I think the communication from the chamber has continued or been better. I, I think that there hasn't been a drop-off as far as the information coming out of the chamber, which I think is, is great and shows how well the board and all the volunteers up there are doing, so I appreciate that.
Fantastic team of people that are willing to help, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to previously discussed business, the 2018 flood. The only thing that I wanted to add to what Phil said about all of the catch basins is I can't stress enough the capital improvement project plan that we've been working on. We really need to get moving along with starting to do some road projects. Every single hole that was dug to replace a catch basin structure, every single time, we had to dig further because the pipes that are underground are awful. Every single hole that we, that we dug, an additional pipe or two additional pipes, another storm structure, it just kind of built and built and built as we started digging, so. The further that we can get along with our CIP and our assessment policy, the better off we will certainly be. So we will hopefully be closing out the FEMA projects probably within a month. They've already given us the money for it, so now we just need to report on the projects. Hopefully that will go smoothly. Any questions? Alright, moving on to new business, 6A DMV reimbursement grant. This was one of the things that was passed this year through the state legislature, was reimbursing registrars for whether it be overtime or additional staffing costs. So on page 36 is a letter from the state stating that our office will receive $37,398.83, which is our portion of the formula that they put together. Governor Walz included an appropriation for 13 million for registrar reimbursement is kind of the headline of this one. There's, there's a part to this that I'm not sure if they are asking for minutes from our meeting accepting the grant, but if they are, I would just ask that we make a motion to accept the reimbursement grant for the deputy registrar office.
That motion, opposed?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Our motion passes, so that will, that will certainly help out the funds for the DAB office, and we look forward to that, so. 6B, the Carlton tax and utility rate study. I just wanted to include this information. This is not a study that we did. It's a study that Carlton needed to do for some state bonding that they are doing. So as a part of this, I highlighted where Moose Lake falls in. It takes a look at the city tax rates, the water rates, as well as the sewer bill rates, and then the LGA plus taxes per capita. What I'm looking to point out is, I think that a lot of us and a lot of people hear about how high taxes are in the city of Moose Lake. As a part of the budget, every single year I put in there where our city taxes fall in compared to other communities surrounding us, other communities that are similar to our size. When we add in the county, when we add in the school, fire district, hospital, all of that, that's where it seems our taxes kind of build up a little bit higher than we would all like. As far as the city's portion of it, what I present to you kind of matches this, which is the city tax rate is actually either low or pretty average for communities our size. Our water rates are right about average, and our sewer rates are actually low compared to other communities. And then looking at LGA plus taxes per capita, we are, we are quite low. So I think that we are doing a pretty good job. It's just informational, but I did want to point out that I do think that we are right, right around where we want to be.
Is there any way to get this information out to the public, you know, so they're aware of this, you know? I hear the same thing that you hear, and I think that some of that problems just that people don't have the proper information to look at.
I mean, outside of just paying to put it in the paper, it's, it's certainly a part of the budget presentation that we put together for the council. Generally, I give the presentation twice at city council meetings, so it's, it's on TV twice. I don't know how many people are tuning into it, but I mean, it's, it's already put together. It's readily available. I don't know where, where you'd like it. Maybe put it on Facebook or something like that.
Something that will allow you to get information out to the people.
Sure.
The more people are aware of that stuff, the better. Put that issue.
Well, I don't, I don't know that they need to stop complaining. I think one of the things that, one of the issues with, with taxes is generally you're thinking of your property taxes as being the city. And there's a whole lot of other things that go into your property taxes other than the city's tax rates. You know, your home value, the county, the school, the fire district, the hospital. I mean, there's a, there's a few things that residents in this area pay for that residents in other areas do not pay for. I mean, we're part of a hospital district and a fire district, which has an additional expense certainly, an additional benefit as well, but just it would be good information to get out here, right? 6C Rocon paving estimate. On page 43 in your packet is an estimate for a 741-foot-long-by-eight-feet patch on the bike trail. There's a map on page 44 that kind of lays it out. So between the North Road and Foles Boulevard is kind of that bypass trail. The city owns the paved section, not the gravel part to it. The city put in that paved section what I believe is for roller gliders and bikers and things like that. When you come down the Munger Trail, the Munger Trail stops and starts, but there's a gap, and this is kind of a way to bypass all of that and hop back on the Munger Trail. There's a long stretch or a couple long stretches. It's not 741 continuous feet, but a total of 741 feet that needs to be replaced. That's eight feet wide. Part of, there's, there's a couple problems. One, I have a hard time suggesting to anybody that we pay $15,000 for a trail when I would certainly say that $15,000 would be more wisely spent on roads and utility improvement that's used by that's used by a considerably larger number of people. The second issue that I have is this area is very flat, and the ditch that is supposed to take water away is maintained by the county. There is really no ditch, all of the gravel has kind of washed into the ditch which backs all the water up. All that water on the paved section of that trail eats away at the pavement, and we're just going to have this problem again and again and again and again. So I don't know what you'd like, what you all would like to do with it. I'm not really sick of anything now other than you be aware that there's a broken pavement section of the trail. The estimate is above fifteen thousand dollars, and we need to kind of figure out where we want to go from there.
And it's due from water erosion mostly?
Well, all of it's due to water erosion. If you go, if you go on the str- the trail is actually much, much longer. What did we think it was, twenty years old or something like that? Didn't Ted say that, are you not there? I think Ted was talking about that we did this like fifteen or twenty years ago. The pavement in every other section is perfect. When you get to here, you can see a lake, and that's where the pavement is broke up.
Yeah, that's all that shith ground under our rock up there.
Well, it's all, and then on top of it, it's, I don't know if it was all blasted into the rock or what, but it's
Probably.
it's really high, and then the trail is like cut into it with a waterfall in it. I mean, that thing was flowing.
It would be hard to get the water that's in there out of there with that rock. There's no simple, easy way to drain that out of there.
My very unpopular opinion on this would be, I think we should just take the pavement out. That way, if it's gravel, we can quickly reshape it, put the gravel back where it needs to be. You could take a land level down it and fix this thing in a matter of minutes. The problem that we're going to have is according to groups like the MS-150, their bikes cannot go down gravel, apparently. I didn't know that was a thing. My bike goes over gravel.
Okay, let's talk to the county engineer and see what they have, if they could look at that section since it is there.
I think their super preference would be to sell it to us for a dollar.
I'm sure.
As they asked me four times in a matter of a half hour long meeting, but yeah.
There's the ATP trail that runs alongside of it too.
Yes, yep.
And I'm sure that that gets eaten away a little bit.
You know, I would agree, except for the fact that everywhere else on the trail where water can go down a ditch, everywhere else the trail is perfect.
It's fine.
Just put in a fifty thousand dollar ditch for the county.
Something to think about, there doesn't need to be a decision necessarily right now. I can certainly reach out to the county engineers. I think a conversation might have come up with the police chief and some others that we thought that maybe they should do some additional ditching as well. So, yeah, I think we could, we can reach out to the county and maybe suggest that some additional maintenance or time be spent on the trail. That unfortunately does not fix the pavement, so.
I think part of the reason in Washington is because the county didn't maintain the gravel. Also.
I would agree.
Although we've been, but you know, I don't remember if you get water pooled out there all the time. You have to walk down the track, dump in the water, and come right out of the rock. Right over there. You should have a long time with your dump.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that one? Oh, as we move on, six D, the Rainbow Run Route. You can see an email that includes the route that this Rainbow Run would like to take. I think they said they wanted to do it on National Night Out, is that right?
Yep.
Okay, so on August sixth, two thousand nineteen, that about four ten, they would like to do the Rainbow Run, is everybody familiar with what that is? Okay, this is the route they'd like to take. Do you have any issues with it, chief? They're not asking for anything really from us. They don't need the public works crew doing anything, as far as I know. So it seems like a good additional event to tie in. Any concerns? Okay, I will pass that along. Six E and six F are the same thing. These are resolutions that we need to pass for the new part-time police officers to include them into Public Employees Police and Fire Plan. I would recommend that you pass both of these.
I recommend we go ahead with that. Join our police force.
All standing up?
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Can we do another one, just for the second one as well? All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Our motion passes. Thank you. Six G is a memorandum of understanding. This would, in effect, this would create an administrative group of employees. This administrative group for this purpose would only include the police chief and myself in order to basically, so in our personnel policies, when somebody retires from the city, there's a section where twenty-five percent of their sick leave is paid to them upon retirement. What this states is that instead of taking that twenty-five percent as just a check, this would put it into a healthcare savings plan. The benefit is, is that it's not taxed when it goes in there. The flip side is that you can only use it for medical expenses then. So you could pay for like your cranium or something along those lines. How this came to be is basically you cannot have a single person enter into this. You need to have a group, otherwise there's a chance that you're going to abuse it or something like that. So if there's two of us, we're not going to abuse it. If there's one of us, there's a high likelihood that we're going to abuse this, according to them. So what I'm asking is that we pass this memorandum of understanding, the chief and I would sign this. There is no cost difference, there is no, there's really no difference whatsoever other than the check would go to the healthcare savings plan people upon retirement other than the check would be made out to the chief or.
Question?
Yes.
What happens to the other seventy-five percent?
It is, wait, that goes away.
Why?
Because we do not, because we do not cap sick leave. And I would say that, I would say that most employers give you your vacation upon termination, whether voluntarily or not, retirement, all of those things. Sick leave is not generally, unless it's PTO, in which case you get all of it.
Ours is capped, but nine hundred and sixty hours.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, is if you have nine, if you accrue nine hundred and sixty hours and you're going to get twenty-five percent of that, what's the benefit of it? I understand that.
What's the benefit of what?
Of not burning down the nine sixty, if you're going to lose, if you're only going to get twenty-five percent. That's what I'm understanding, is that you're going to get twenty-five percent of the nine sixty, or you're going to get paid cash the rest of it.
No, no, so you get, according to our personnel policies, you get twenty-five percent of what is in that balance. That happens today already. If you retire, you get twenty-five percent.
You're just changing it to MSRS.
Correct, that's the only difference.
And that's basically that we look at if we ever update our personnel policy.
Yeah, so the only reason that we're doing it with these this way rather than all employees is I haven't talked to all employees, and I cannot make it optional. So if we're going to change it so that everybody could do this, everybody has to have it go to this. It cannot be a
There's not a choice when you retire. If you need cash, you have to put it in.
So like, you guys have MSRS for deferred comp, right, for retirement?
Yep.
That is completely optional, can be handled by the employee. It can be your choice whether you want to do it, not do it. There's all these things that are just optional, but there's a cap to how much can be put in there for a year because it's taxed for. This one is, there is no cap, and that's where I think they come up with a lot of the rules. So somebody could put a hundred thousand dollars in here and not have it taxed, and then they can use it for medical expenses, and again, it's not taxed. So there is the possibility that somebody could kind of try to get around the system. We don't really offer any way for somebody to scam the system. So I would say that this just makes
No, my only question was why twenty-five percent? So I wasn't upon that number, and ours is a hundred percent, so.
Is it really?
Nine sixty.
Upon retirement? I'm not suggesting that.
Could I know something?
Sure.
When I was hired, it was a hundred percent. Sometime, a couple of city administrators have gone and changed, unbeknownst to me until recently.
I think the last time I was updated was like twenty eleven, twenty twelve, so if you were in twenty ten, it was a hundred percent.
I'm still not suggesting that. Can we, is there a motion to approve this?
I'll take that motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries? All right. Six H is a notice of public hearing. Notice of public hearing for a street and utility capital improvement plan. This is the same capital improvement plan we've been talking about the last few months. The only thing that I am requesting is that you pass a motion to have a notice of public hearing, and we invite the public to speak on the capital improvement plan in July.
No motion to have a public hearing on the capital improvements plan.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right, motion passes. That will be at four fifteen on Wednesday, July seventeenth, which will be the regular city council meeting. We will have a public hearing on the street and utility capital improvement plan. From page fifty-three to to page eighty-six is the actual capital improvement plan. If anybody has any questions ahead of that, we'll put the notice on our Facebook page. And then also, so long, is there a limit to the size that you put on Facebook?
July tenth.
The July tenth?
That's the second one.
That's the second Wednesday?
At four.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, what was your question?
Is there a size limit to how big, like a PDF you can put on Facebook? We will try to put this on Facebook.
I think I might be able to put it on our website and then put a link to our website on our Facebook page.
So we will, we will try to get the, certainly the notice will be published in the paper and on Facebook and on the bulletin boards. We'll try to publish this plan so that people can review it as well. If anybody has any questions, certainly they can reach out prior to the meeting and let us know. Any questions or concerns?
So that meeting is going to be July tenth?
July tenth, yep.
Set a notice also on utilities.
Yeah. All right, the next one is six K or six J, sorry, which is another notice of public hearing. This one would be for the special assessment policy. This one, we haven't reviewed the document fully at a city council meeting. We will do that in July. The entire assessment policy is in your packet, and it's been emailed out as well. We'll do the same thing with that, we'll try to give it out to everybody on the packet out for everyone to review. Any questions, please let me know. Same thing, the public hearing will be July tenth at four forty-five for that one. Is there a motion for a public hearing?
So.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Six L is resignation letter from Nina Bergerson in the library. She has been here for nineteen years, I believe. Seventeen of them, as she states, as the assistant director, she's been here for a long time. Certainly been a great asset for the library, and we are sorry to see her go. Would be a motion to accept her resignation.
So. One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. And then six M is also a resignation letter from Chris Brandon in the library. She is another part-time employee, and again, we will certainly be sad to see her go as well. Is there a motion to accept her resignation? Oh, she still resigns.
Some will. One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Just a quick question.
Yes.
I know we talked, other people have left about some type of letter of thank you or something that the city should send something to them, this earlier years of service, and that we greatly appreciate that. And that's quite a long time to have been here. So the chief will be doing it. Thank you.
All right, opposed? All right, motion carries. Six N is the recommendation from the library board to hire a full-time library director. And let me just back up a little bit here. The library board is met a few times after the two part-time people resigned to decide how to move forward with the library, whether it be changing days and hours, part-time versus full-time library director, hiring two part-time clerks versus hiring one with a full-time library director. Their recommendation from this past library board meeting was to hire one library clerk and have the library director be full-time. There was, if anybody was interested, I can email it to you. There was basically a breakdown of the cost of several different options. Most all of them either broke even or a little bit less currently, but all basically fell in line with what we need. This came up a few months ago. When Steve was here, we were looking at hiring an additional part-time person in the DMV. And this was, this was actually our initial recommendation was with the IT stuff being handled by CW, that we simply have a full-time library director and eliminate one of the part-time positions. The staff in the library at the time, their strong suggestion to the library board was that they have additional part-time staff instead of a full-time library director with the resignation of a few part-time people, this kind of brought about the conversation again. And it is the recommendation from the library board that we hire Shelby to be full-time rather than part-time, and then hire one library clerk rather than two. Does that make sense?
There would be no assistant director then.
Correct, we would also not have an assistant library director. Those, all of those job duties would be a part of the library director. Is there anything else you want to add, anything you want?
Well, there is the option two, and then option five. The two is without benefits, and then five was with benefits. And I think we're done with option two.
No, so option two is with benefits with single rather than family.
Okay.
Benefits are laid out in the personnel policy, so we would have to, no matter whether the full-time person was hired, we would have to offer those benefits. those benefits. I, I...
So a few months ago, we didn't have enough money for Steve Devine Julinski, and now we have money. So obviously, you said there's figures there. I'd just like to know what those figures are, 'cause I think we're gonna be bombastic with questions of why all of a sudden does the board now say that we have money? I guess I would like to know, I think a lot of people would like to know, which has nothing to do with Shelby or anything like that, just how was it different with that one person not being there? What's the money difference? Someone could get just a brief breakdown, so I can understand this.
Shelby, is there anywhere that you can email up to me?
Yeah, I actually have it right here, which is a point.
Shelby, is there anywhere that you can email up to me?
Yeah, I actually have it right here, which is a point.
Well, let me, while she's doing that, why don't I answer the first one? The first one is that previously, we did not have enough money for Steve, which I would say that that's, that's not quite how that went, but certainly, that was a piece of it. So what we did was, when, when the Personnel Committee met to discuss adding an additional person in the DMV, we recommended that we reduce the staffing cost in the library by the cost of that position. So basically, we would take the equivalent of a part-time person from the library, and we would move those funds to the DMV. So our initial recommendation, again, with, Steve was, was basically part-time library, part-time IT. We were taking the IT portion away, giving it to CW, was, our recommendation was make Steve full-time in the library, eliminate one of the part-time positions in the library, and move those funds to the DMV. So by doing that, which is basically what the recommendation is now, by doing that, we would save enough money in the library to pay for that position in the DMV. The recommendation from the staff in the library then came back that they, their preference would be to have a part-time library, to continue to have a part-time library director, and continue to have as many part-time staff in the library as possible, with eliminating whatever cost needed, which was basically the IT portion of that job, and moving that to the DMV, which the Library Board also recommended doing that. Either way, the cost is, to cover the DMV position was what we were attempting to, to do, and either of those two options did that. Did you find it, Shelby?
Yeah, I sent it to you, and I've got, I've got the physical one here too. If you...
I'm just looking for a gross breakdown.
How about total, can I have the physical one?
Yeah.
Can I, so a total with all employees?
Yeah.
'Cause it's easier, it's easier if we look at all.
Was Steve in that position compared to now, where we're moving up with the DMV now, with Shelby for this recommendation?
Right, and we have, we have the with, with Steve versus Shelby as well. So, basically, she took a look at five different options. The first option is, what do we currently have right now? So with Shelby, Nina, Chris, Rosanna, Donna, total for, per week was $1,743.43. If we were to have Shelby be full-time, plus one new person, so that eliminates the Assistant Library Director, we hire one new person, and Shelby moves to full-time, the total cost would be, well, there's, there's two things. I'll just do it with the library, I have the same schedule, is $1,656.4. So a slight cost savings, which comes from less staff, but also less the Assistant Library The scenario three is the keeping Shelby part-time, but with the addition of two new employees, two new clerk positions, the total cost to the city would be $1,417.44, with the majority of the cost savings coming from no longer having the Assistant Library Director position, which obviously is a higher rate than just a regular clerk. Scenario four was, what would have been, what we were looking at was, Donna was the newest position at the time, eliminating that part-time position, but still having Steve here, the total cost would have been $2,199.13 per week. And those are the four main ones there. So, does that kind of, kind of make sense as far as the breakdown goes? This doesn't take a look at the cost that we had previously, if Steve was gonna be full-time, if the Assistant Library Director was there, trying to figure out the cost of that, the DMV position. No matter what we do, that cost savings is still built into however the library moves forward. So if the funding, we're continuing to have the funding for the part-time position in the DMV, now it's just a matter of, is there a full-time library director with one clerk, part-time library director with two clerks, two additional library clerks? Either way, that cost savings is, is still there.
And with that 37K, bringing that to the pool, does that have anything to do with any, how that plus sponsored community use that with this stuff?
I would, I would say no. I would say that currently, currently the, the DMV loses money. It will continue to lose money, and there's nothing that I can really do about that. The second thing that I would say is, we do not charge the DMV for utilities, for office space, for, we charge them for nothing, and we still lose money. The next thing I would say is, they're, they're looking at doing a few things in the office that would cost some money, but no matter what, they are losing money every single year, and I think that if we just left that money in the DMV, that, that would be wise.
Oh, yeah, I'm not asking...
No, no, I mean, I mean in the long term, 'cause they're gonna run out of money eventually. It's, you're talking 10 years down the road, if we keep going the way that we're going, we would need to look at, at funding that from the general fund.
And my final question is, so what is your recommendation as the city administrator?
So I, I spoke with the Personnel Committee as well, the Mayor and Chris, who could not be here, both of them agreed to, to go along with the Library Board. My, my thought is this, full-time employees are, more generally speaking, more invested into their positions and into the organizations that they work for. Anytime that you can have a part-time, or a full-time person, rather than a part-time person, generally speaking, you're, you're getting a, a better employee, one that will stay longer, hopefully. My, my recommendation would be to go along with, with the Library Board recommends as well.
At roughly a savings, is state of, are we...
The current savings would be...
Seventy-two compared to like number four?
I, I think the current savings is like $90 a week.
Okay.
Technically...
What's when Steve would have been here?
Oh, that, compared to...
Your, your, that's 2193.
That's what, 500 or...
Almost 600. It was almost 2,200.
Yeah.
Probably, 7,200 a year.
Yeah. But, again, that, that's not just Steve's salary, so I don't, I don't want...
We're not trying to look at that other position, that's...
Right.
All right, I just needed to know that.
Yeah, so I mean, technically, yes. Even going with the full-time person, even that still saves us money. I, I do wanna point out that either way, saves us the amount of money that we need to, to do what we're trying to do, so...
Paul's right.
As far as I know.
And we're looking for a motion?
Correct.
I'd make that motion to hire Shelby for a full-time position.
I would ask that we, we figure out when that would start. So Nina's last day is Thursday, I think it would be your Friday morning, yeah? There is no, there would not be, basically what we looked at in the Library Board meeting was multiplying her average, or not her average, her hourly rate times 2,080 hours, which is just a full-time employee. That's what the, the new salary would be, this would be a salary position. So there's a couple of things that I would ask that you include in the motion, which would be, one, the start date, which could either be Friday or, or Monday, would be my recommendation.
I'm here on Friday anyways, or Monday, it doesn't really matter.
The second thing that I would ask is that this is a salary position at, let's just say...
Hourly rate?
At her current hourly rate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I'll amend my motion, that Shelby will start full-time effective Friday. Shelby, a salary employee at her hourly rate, maybe basically, basically on 2,080 hours a year.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's no further business under new business. I do not have any reports or correspondence. Under eight is committee and board meeting minutes. There's, you can see the minutes included in that. Any questions on any of the meeting minutes? Announcements, the regular Moose Lake City Council meeting, the next one will be Wednesday, well, that's not...
These are all...
I didn't do any of these.
What did you...
All right, the next one will be Wednesday, July 10th, 2019, at 4:00 PM. The Moose Lake Economic Development Authority will be Wednesday, July 10th, 2019, at 12:00 PM. The Moose Lake Water and Light Commission regular meeting will be Tuesday, June, what was?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, at 3:00 PM, at the Water and Light Offices. The next Moose Lake Housing and Redevelopment Authority meeting will be July 8th at 11:00 AM at the Hillside Manor Office. The next Moose Lake Area Fire District meeting will be Tuesday, July 9th, at 6:30 PM at the Emergency Response Center. The next Moose Lake Park Board meeting will be Monday, July 1st, 2019, at 6:30 PM at the City Council Town Board Chambers. The next Library Board meeting will be July 12th, 2019, at 1:00 PM in the City Conference Room. Is that all right, Paulus?
Yeah.
All right.
Did good.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments, questions? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
One.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. I was waiting for, I was waiting for a phone call.